Start recording, you're good to go.
Thank you. I will now call to order a town of St. Andrews special meeting of council on Monday, June 8th, 2020 at 6:06 PM. Recording of attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance this evening. I will now look for a motion to approve the agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
Also move.
Counselor Bishop, thank you, and a seconder.
I'll second that.
Counselor Gru, thank you. If there aren't any questions about the agenda, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. I'll now move to disclosure of conflict of interest on any matter before council tonight.
Your worship, I might potentially have one in regards to BTHC 200503, but I'll wait to see if it is relevant or not.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor, and you will do the right thing when it comes to that if necessary. Thank you. Having said that, there's no conflicts of interest at the present time. We will move to presentations. And before we go to the presentations, I also want to welcome the public that is watching in tonight. And I also want to notify the public that with us as well are our Chief Administrative Officer and Treasurer, Chris Spear, and our Clerk and Senior Administrator, Paul Knopper. And we're now joined by Alexander Gopin, Planner with the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, who's going to be presenting to council updates to the municipal plan MP 20-01 and the secondary municipal plan MP 20-02. Mr. Gopin, welcome tonight.
Thank you, your worship. I'm very glad that Counselor Harrison requested a written update of the changes, because hopefully you have that in front of you. And if I can't give you a visual presentation, you're gonna have to follow along on that. So I'll start with the changes to the municipal plan after our last meeting. And they were really, there's just one thing with the municipal plan. It was changing those two pids at the end of Katie's Lane that the town owned from residential to green space. So I did that. And that's really it. Maybe other changes in regard to... Hard one, I don't think it's in front of me. The coastal conservation area, so it goes around the whole town. And I mean, I went over that last presentation, so I can go back over it. But unless there are questions about it, I'll move on to the secondary municipal plan.
Your worship.
Also, any questions, Counselor Gru?
Thank you, your worship. I have a question on para 2.8.3, para 1.
Para housing 2.8.3, para 1.
Yeah, I think it either needs, that para can either be deleted or reworded. It sort of comes across as a statement that short-term rental units within the town of St. Andrews will not impact long-term rental supply.
I think now... Does yours, does yours read negatively or significantly impact?
It says negatively.
I think it should be significantly.
I agree, I think we made that change already, didn't we?
Yeah.
Why don't we just take it out?
Reword it back.
I think we could take that whole out, because it, when I read the proposal, Xander, it says it is proposed that the development of short-term rental units within the town of St. Andrews will not significantly or negatively, whatever we're gonna make, impact long-term rental unit supply. So to me, it's almost a statement that they, they won't negatively impact. And we really don't know that at this point, because the second para talks about monitoring and all that sort of thing. So I tend to agree with Counselor Harrison, we could potentially take that out. Or I think that it needs to be reworded a little bit.
Because I mean, if we started with monitoring, then we could, or the next council probably, to be honest, could figure out the solution once we know the problem.
Yeah.
The idea was, the way those two work together is yes, to monitor, as it says in para 2. But then if you find through that monitoring that there is a significant impact on the long-term rental unit supply, then that gives the town a little bit more teeth in regulating it, although it's something the town could regulate without that statement.
Because it almost seems, Xander, that when I read it, that if it was reworded, it says, sort of, it is proposed that the development of short-term rental units within the town of St. Andrews will not proceed if there is significant long-term impact on the rental supply or something.
On the long-term rental, that would work too. I think that would have the same intent.
Yeah, because right now, it almost reads as though it's a statement, a fact.
Right. Right, I think the idea is that it is a fact through regulations, or if it's not, if it is not significantly impacting it, then it's not. But it could be reworded, and the way you proposed is not. I think it would still have the same force.
I'm good either way, I just thought that was a bit strange, that one paragraph.
Everyone concur with that, and we'll ask Mr. Gopin to do another reroute up right on that section and circulate it. Okay? Good. Gopin?
All right. So I guess I'll move on to the changes to the secondary municipal plan. Let me just make sure I've got this policy highlighted, so I don't forget about it. Secondary municipal plan. So I did go over this in the last presentation, but I'll just mention it again. So in section 2.1.2, massing and scale in the Historic Business District, there was this concern that if you allowed a 10% tolerance of the average of main buildings on the same block, you could have a slippery slope where you've got 10%, and then another 10%, another 10%, and things keep going up and up and up. So a very simple way to ensure that doesn't happen is set a maximum height, and 15 meters is the height of the Kennedy Inn, which is currently the tallest building in the Historic Business District. So I did go over that last time. And then in that discussion last time, Counselor Goo Michelle brought up the issue of lighting. And that was, I think Deputy Mayor Henderson also saw that as an issue. So I, and then the mayor said this, you know, this, I think this sounds like a best practice. So I did the best with that that I could. And in section 2.4.2, which is the entrances, there I added, except for special events and other similar purposes, business should avoid using internal lighting outside of normal business hours. And lighting at entrances should not negatively impact neighboring properties and must follow all applicable bylaws. And just to note, there are sections in the zoning bylaw that do talk about lighting. Fixtures and furniture should be of high-quality materials, wrought iron, aluminum, glass, wood, or adequate facsimile. Plastic and vinyl are to be avoided. I took the liberty of adding a little bit about the furniture as well, because lighting fixtures, if you're going to talk about that, I think it makes sense to talk about the outdoor furniture that businesses are putting out. And of course, this is all best practice, so it's not required that those materials be used. And in doing a quick scan of Water Street, really, that's what is there. But, so I did go a little bit further than what council had asked for. So I'm happy to hear some feedback on that.
I'm sure.
Okay. And then the last thing, very simple. In historic, section 2.6.2, Historic Business District Landscaping, asphalt paving had been required to not be used. And there was some concern that that was too extreme. So just pop that into the best practice section. So it just reads, in most cases, asphalt paving should be avoided for pedestrian walkways. And that's it.
Xander, how does the asphalt paving being avoided for pedestrian walkways factor into the fact that we have a trail system, you know, spanning across town?
That's all. Right. So this is, A, this is in the Historic Business District, which that trail isn't in. But B, this was a concern that had been brought up before for the town plat. And it's a best practice in the town plat as well. So in most cases, especially for people, you know, backyard, that's really what this is referring to. But there might be things like a trail system that really it makes sense to have asphalt paving, and that's why it should be a best practice and not requirement.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Gopin, could, I hate to go back and forth, but I did have a comment about massing and scale of the C within a 10% tolerance. Maybe it's just my lack of facility in the English language. But when I read C again, it says, within a 10% tolerance of the average of main buildings on the same block. If that's a period, I get that. But then it says, to a maximum height of 42.49.2 feet. It could, that could be interpreted that that's the maximum height, no matter on every block. That's not what it means, but I think people might look at that that way. Can we not say that, that, that no building shall be, you know, taller than 49.2 feet? And it has to be, I just, maybe I'm just misinterpreting the English.
The way I intended it to be interpreted was you can do 10% of the average main building on the block. But if at any point that average of 10% brings you above 15 meters, then you have to cap it at 15 meters.
Right. But the 50 meters is, that example is taken from one building though, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the idea is that you allow for some flexibility in height, but no building in the Historic Business District is ever taller than 15 meters.
Right. And, but interpreting it correctly, it's only on that block where the 50-foot building is that it could be 50, a building could, another building could be 50 feet. Is that, is that my interpreting correct?
No, I think the way it's written on any block, you could get up to 15 meters.
Okay.
You would have to be, you'd still have to go within 10% of the the tallest building on that block. But there could then be, I guess, another slippery slope where you hit 15 meters, but then you stop.
Right, so if all the buildings on, on a block are no more than 35 feet high, you can't put a 50-foot building on that block?
No.
Or you can?
No, you, you could not. I guess if, I'm probably not good enough at math to do this, but if with that 10%, you could get to 15 meters, that's the only way you could do that.
Yeah, that was my concern, is that, you know, I believe that right now it's 36 feet, is it not? And so that's a 14-foot change.
You're in the zoning bylaw, 36 feet?
I think so. In the downtown, in the Historic Business District.
Which is probably 36 feet. Right, so this is, and we've given several variances for buildings in the Historic Business District, which does let them go higher than that. And you would still... I mean, I suppose this would supersede the zoning bylaw, because it's a municipal plan. So in the Historic Business District, you're kind of... You're changing the maximum height to 15 meters.
Can I, your worship, through you?
Yeah, Mr. Spear, sorry.
I guess we could change the wording a little bit, but I'm feeling there's maybe council needs to give us some insight, because we could say it's either the lesser of 10% of the variance on the block to a maximum of 15%, which is a little more, or 15 meters, which is more clear. But I guess we need direction on if the 15 meters, because hypothetically, the 15 meters could be applied over a couple of decades all along Water Street, so all the heights could go up to that maximum right now, as it's written. Is that correct, Xander?
Yeah, that's correct. It would probably be a slow creep if that did happen.
So we just need direction from council if that was the intent, or whatever have you. Because we kind of thought that knowing what the tallest building is in the Historic Business District, you're kind of okay if everybody else kind of crept up to that height. But maybe we misinterpreted that.
I think with a mainly developed downtown historic district, the likelihood of it creeping up is it would take a significant amount of time that this municipal plan would be reviewed over that period of time, should they ever think that it starts becoming a challenge. Is there any, how many buildings are over 13.5 meters already in the downtown? Because that's what we need to hit 15.
I honestly can't tell you off the top of my head. Kennedy Inn is a four-story building, and I think most of the other buildings are three stories. So I know 131 Water Street is gonna be like a little bit over 36. I think there, I think the maximum height is 10 meters, and they're gonna be 11 and a half. And unfortunately, I can't really do any math right now, because I don't have the internet, and I'm very bad at math.
I guess just the concern I have is that it goes back to another issue about, we've already settled the point that if you own a property, you can demolish it. And I wouldn't want to think that we were adding 14 feet to the maximum height of the building that would cause developers to demolish perfectly good two- and three-story buildings in order to build a four-story building, and that the whole downtown would then have 50 years from now, four-story buildings. If that's our intention to allow that, that's okay. But I wouldn't want it to happen accidentally. But I do like the idea of, one final comment, I do like the idea of the planning committee not setting the precedence, you know, building by building, by us having a standard that most people, we could regulate, that they would comply with, so that there wouldn't be any need for variances. So we would, you know, would be council's judgment on how tall the tallest building could be, not, not the planning committee. Counselor Gru, sorry?
Thank you, your worship. Just for clarity, and just to pick up on what you've been saying, is perhaps, Xander, you could add a para D. And para C would read, within a 10% tolerance of the average of the main buildings on the same block. And then para D would say, the maximum height of any building would be 12.5. I'm thinking 12.5 meters, which is about 40 feet, which is consistent with what we have now, a little bit more, rather than going to 15 meters. So if you add that para D, it sort of makes it much more clear.
Yeah, I think doing that does make it more clear. Now, if you set a height in here, this supersedes the zoning bylaw. So the only way anybody will be able to go over that height, if you do use a maximum height, will be by amending this plan. So that's, it becomes a longer process that council is involved with in.
Yep.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
I don't know what people think about the 15 meters, but I think it's to go from 36 to 49 feet is a pretty big jump. And I think if we go to 12.5 meters, which works out to about 40 feet, 41 feet, I think it's, it's a much more gradual stepped approach.
And would probably lead to us being able to have three-story buildings, but not four-story buildings.
Exactly.
Yeah, so you're still allowing a little bit of flexibility with three stories, but I think you would, if somebody wanted to put a four-story building in, they would have to come to council.
Right.
And that sounds like that is what council desires.
Your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Gopin. Anybody else want to comment on that?
Your worship, can I just sort of ask a question through you to Mr. Gopin, though?
Certainly.
So Xander, back in, you know, a couple of months ago, the PrAC had to approve a variance on a three-story building that's near the Treadwell Inn. And that was kind of to do it to modern standards. What was the height end up being of that in total, just that kind of?
I think that was 11 and a half. I'm pretty sure 11 and a half. That, that could slide in with this.
Yeah.
The 12 meters wouldn't would still allow for something like that, a roomier three-story.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of the new, the new standard for a three-story building, is all I'm thinking. So at least that gives council an idea of in modern building code and practices what is kind of needed. So thank you to your worship and to Xander.
Great. I guess that's, are those all the things that we'll move now to? Changes have been covered, we'll move to introduction, consideration, and passing of bylaws and motions, and we'll go to PED 200101, discussion requiring, requiring the municipal plan. Counsel, are there other issues that are still outstanding in the municipal plan that you wish discussed? Sounds like we're getting to the closing stages here.
It does.
We've been around this block many times so far, but it's, it's been very worthwhile, I think, these discussions, because we are getting it down to the fine tuning. Okay, if there's nothing there, then how about we'll move then to PED 200102, discussion regarding the secondary municipal plan. MP 20-02, council. Any issues that you want brought up? Open to comment on, perhaps?
Your worship, just as a quick question, though, we have a tentative timeline. Would you like to talk about that at this point, or a little bit later in the meeting? Just so staff understands what next steps we think we should take in councils and agreement with those.
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a good idea. If no one has any specific changes that they want to put forward concerning the secondary plan, we can talk about the timeline for the decision-making on both of these matters. Spear?
Sure, so staff work together, and I know Mr. Knopper's jumping into his document to come up with a timeline. So here's what's being proposed by staff over the next few weeks. So a week from tonight, we'd like to bring the zoning bylaw that hasn't been reviewed by council. It has been in circulation a bit, but it hasn't been reviewed for a full review by council, or at least the start of a full review by council and discussion. And then the week after that, I know, and I guess we should ask this now, we're hoping to go to the committee meeting on June 22nd, a week early, just because of the kind of, the Canada Day long weekend is kind of around the 29th. So we should talk about that later tonight. But we're planning right now to have the committee meeting, and I know an email went out to council a couple of weeks ago on that. On the July 6th meeting.
Sorry, your worship, Chris, do you want me to put it on share screen, so everyone can see it?
Certainly, if you've got it available.
Yep, give me one second here. Can you see it?
Not yet.
Sharing now.
There we go.
Go ahead, Chris.
Hey, there we go. So this has been circulated to council, I think, Paul, hasn't it? Couple of meetings ago, but we'll recirculate after this meeting, just so we're on the same agenda. So what we're proposing is that the July regular meeting, at 6 o'clock, we'll have a public information meeting on the secondary municipal plan. So that's really, we've done this once before, I believe, but it's to go back to council, or sorry, to the community in an informal way to inform them what the secondary municipal plan is. And then at the regular meeting, we want to set a hearing of objections for the municipal plan. And then we have to send it to PrAC once more, the changes we've made. Then we're hoping to go to the zoning bylaw for first reading. Again, council's gotten into it, and that's just the suggestions. And we'll know better by the committee meeting in a couple of weeks if council wants to do that or not. Then towards the end of July, at our, at the, what should be our committee meeting, we will have a public hearing of objections for the municipal plan. So that's our, hopefully, our final hearing of objections for this before we go to third reading on, in August. And then on July 27th, we'll be looking at the second, the motion review, so it's getting ready for the next meeting, that we may go to a second reading for the secondary municipal plan in the August meeting, as well as send it to PrAC, with eventually, long story short, ending it at the end of August. Or sorry, the first meeting is September, hopefully to go to third reading. So sorry, I've skipped all, all that month, but that's essentially over the next month we want to do. So is council okay with that? Again, that's the tentative timeline. If after a couple of meetings, you decide you want to do something a little different, it certainly can be changed. But the next steps for the public would be, can you, sorry, Paul, can you take it back to the top?
Yep.
Sorry, your worship?
Yes?
Is Xander still on the phone?
Yeah, still here.
Okay, my question through you, your worship, to Xander is, is there a possibility that there could be some, some, I guess, comments or elements coming on the zoning bylaw that will impact on the municipal plan or the secondary municipal plan?
I don't think the municipal plan. The secondary plan and the zoning bylaw need to be brought in at the same time. Because a, you can bring in the zoning bylaw before the secondary plan, but if you bring the secondary plan first, it, it's kind of incompatible with the current zoning bylaw. So that would, that would cause issues.
Okay. Yeah, no, my concern there is we get down the path of doing the review and getting public comments on the zoning bylaw, and then somebody comes up with some earth-shattering comment or revelation that causes us to go back to the municipal plan and have to make another change, and throws our timetable a bit out of whack.
If I may, through you, your worship?
Yes, Mr. Spear?
I, I concur with Counselor Gru's concerns. But I guess if you remember, the steps that we should be taking with the municipal plan is that the municipal plan is kind of the oversight of where we think everything should be. And so we're trying to avoid at this point, like tonight's meeting is to say, you know, council's extremely happy with this municipal plan, and that we're gonna devise all our other documents based on what's before us on this municipal plan. I'm not saying things can't happen, but I think at this point, you've got to kind of phrase the municipal plan and move forward with it. Again, if something comes forward, we can always amend it over the next couple of years, right? But I think we've revisited this thing, I hate to use the expression to death, but we've just gone through a lot of meetings, a lot of people at this point. And so I think as staff, and Xander can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're comfortable with this version of it to bring to the public. And then it's to move on to the next final two documents. And then it's to move on to the next final two documents.
And I guess the advice that Mr. Gopin is giving us is that the. The zoning by law and the secondary municipal plan. ought to be harmonized in terms of their approval because they impact one another. But not necessarily the municipal plan, it's the overriding. We can go ahead with the municipal plan.
I I think the C O raises an excellent point in that we can go ahead with the municipal plan, approve that. And if there needs to be changes in the future, we can amend it.
Right, right. Okay, good, thank you, all. And Mr. Spear, I like your suggestion that we we send this back out to council after. That that timetable so that we, if anybody, and that will be your last chance to say it's. It it needs to be changed and then we'll change it as we go along. Meeting by meeting if necessary, depending on how those meetings evolve.
And your worship, just to be clear too, that. We're not, the planet itself won't be frozen until we go to the meeting in August. And send the views to Prac and stuff, or sorry, July. Sorry, Paul, it's like a shock on your face, July meeting to send it August. So it still gives everyone a couple of weeks to think about any changes they want to make, but I think we're almost there with it.
All right, good. I think we can go now, Mr. Spear, to discussions regarding the downtown St. Andrews Water Street pilot project.
Thank you, worship. We're moving along really well. We've had some discussions with some of the business owners, but those that were brought up. At the last meeting, the public meeting, I think it was last week, was we've just moved forward because council seemed to be okay with those and so. Specifically, that was that they needed to be maybe a short term loading zone. For the laundromat as well as. That we're going to have thirty minutes parking by the hardware store in front of the mural along King Street. To address their concerns for their customers. One other thing that has come up for discussion that's kind of tied into it, kind of not, is. Parking for fuel trucks. On the wharf, but it's also potentially creating more parking. So I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to get anything out to you, but do all of you know where the Jolly Breeze building is? Up on King Street as you head down towards the wharf, on the right hand side, there's the boat ramp. And then there's like a little green space with picnic tables, and then there's the Jolly Breeze building. Well. In the past, there has been parking many years ago in that green space. But as you're aware, there's a policy by council implemented, not by this council many years ago. That all street ends, which that is, should be held over for the public use and so. We're trying to keep parking off of it and we're just throwing a couple of tables on it and put little barricades around it to make it usable. But as you've. Have probably seen some writings coming from some of the boat operators. Is that we're asking them to move their fuel trucks off the wharf and. That is creating problems for them because some of the smaller boats have to refill in between trips. And so that's potentially putting them behind Town Hall or even further afoot if they can't get guaranteed parking. So what we think might be an alternative is if we. Use the word got rid of that green space, but converted it to short term or to parking for this summer only. There's only gravel on there, I don't think there's there's not soil. We could make four additional parking spots. But two of them would be used for the tour boat operators affected by the fueling decision. And they'd have to give up their spot on the wharf to reduce the number of vehicles out there. But then they'd have to run back and forth over the course of the day to to fuel up. So kind of need direction on that because. Not sure if we have to amend the by law or anything, but certainly it'll go against a current policy of the town of St. Andrews. If you're willing to convert that. Another item that. We could talk about too is we got a quote for basically a gate at the wharf. So pedestrians would always be allowed, but it's one of those like swinging gates like you see at the regional hospital in St. John. And to have one of those installed and then everybody with authorized access would be given a card. It's twelve thousand dollars, just as an FYI, I haven't determined yet if. I've got to ask Tom, it hasn't gotten really into high season yet, but I've got to ask him. How the gate with the new, like we have that journey barricade that cuts off half the driving lane. With a gate that can be moved and if that's working well for people. We've talked to landowners and I guess I'd like to have a discussion with you off camera. About some of the business arrangements we've come across where it's a business matter under a closed session, your worship. That might be appropriate, but we are acquiring parking spots in the downtown. And to redirect people and I'm talking to staff in order to. To see how we can sign it properly, so you know. Saying we're going to use big flashing neon signs or anything, but something that's going to, as people come down. Our Reed Avenue, they're going to get, you know, top of my head, the thought is they go down par, then you start showing directions for various parking lots. For public parking, but that's the top of my head and not worked out yet. We're going to have a discussion among staff this week to see how to properly sign that. To lead people to appropriate parking. And the only other thing that we'll have to consider is, as you know, in the by law, we've taken away some parking in areas. We're going to short term parking. You know, thirty minutes or so, well, it's going to require a higher level of by law enforcement. And so we need to have a discussion again, probably in closed session and. But that next level and how to pay for it and what form that'll take. Because as you know, our wharf injur serves two functions as by law officer and the wharf injur, and so. He can't be at two places at the same time or work seven days a week, so. It presents some stuff, but again, because this is a pseudo legal matter that I don't want necessarily the public to hear. At this point in time, I'd like to take that to closed session, but that is a consideration too for costing and timing of that.
Okay.
And then, well, the third item, I guess we'll wait till. The deputy mayor declared a conflict of interest on it, but it probably should be something in closed session as well that we discuss. Because it's not really a public matter at this point in time.
It's fine, Mr. Spear, we will, we will move into closed session at the end of this meeting, but. First, I would just open it up to council to comment on. On the pilot project and where we're at. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Spear, Mr. Knopper? Who have been primarily involved in developing this?
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, certainly.
I got, I've been, I guess, I've met with people downtown when I'm down there and they have. A lot of them have said that they're very happy with the plan that we've come through. Their only concern is for the seniors and seniors parking, which I said we've had a lot of discussions on. And that we will still continue, but they will be notified, but they were, all in all, I didn't hear a lot of negativity. Except for the parking. So kudos to our staff that's worked very hard on this. And I thank them for their time and consideration.
Thank you, councillor Akadi. I I too have heard mostly positive comments about. Us doing the town, taking the initiative with the business community to do this.
Thank you, worship and councillor Akadi. Sorry, deputy mayor, there's two quick, sorry to interject. Was one, just to remind some of our seniors that the plan is. That Market Square, that some of that parking is going to be converted into accessible parking or mobility challenge parking. Sorry, I don't know what the proper term is these days, but we'll probably have more parking now than we've ever had. For that sector of the population, something else that. Been thinking about what we can talk about is even having a shorter time limit on the spaces behind Town Hall. That, you know, just to increase turnover, we might be able to say, you know, you have one hour, two hour, thirty minute, whatever, behind Town Hall to. Thirty minutes, probably not the right number because you want to encourage people to be able to go have dinners and stuff, but. There's different potentials there too to increase turnover and discourage people from, like employees from parking there from nine to five and. In eliminating spaces for those that are just coming in for the day.
Thank you. Yeah, so Groo, did you have a comment before? Sorry, I missed you. Was it the deputy mayor? Sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to go along with obviously your comments, your worship and councillor Akadi Jesus. I think that the town should make an active effort to double the amount of mobility accessible parking spots this year. I I I think it should be a little strategic where we look at every block and and have something as an option because. I have talked to a few of the businesses downtown. Even the hairdresser, they have a lot of seniors that go there and they're worried about having to walk a couple of blocks to go there, for example, and it makes it tough on them, so. I think we, although one area makes sense, like Market Square, I think we need to really spread it out. And have it double what it normally would be and to be honest, the number one. And really almost only complaint that I'm hearing is the parking for people that can't walk as far, so I think. If we can figure that out, this plan should be a huge success for the town of St. Andrews.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Groo.
Thank you. Just just the suggestion that maybe the the C O could could consider. Is that if you're looking at thirty minute parking, I think a lot of the people around town are concerned about the thirty minute parking. And if you look at the spots that are near the post, that are right by the post office. And those spots on King Street near the bank. If those were all made thirty minute parking so people can go in, do their banking, pick up their mail. Do a quick run to pick up their their pharmacy. And perhaps drop into the hardware store and do, pick up their nails and stuff like that. I think that would satisfy most of the people in town, even, you know, it's close enough to Town Hall that if you have to go to Town Hall for some reason. That provides a fair amount of parking. For for just those little errands, which would make a huge difference for the the town folk.
Thank you, councillor Groo.
Excellent suggestion, councillor. We'll work those out this week and. Trying to remember my dates here, eighth fifteenth, so two weeks from today. During the committee meeting, we'll probably have to have a special meeting to amend the by law because it'll kick into action. Before the special meeting that the new pilot project, so we'll work on that. For the next couple of weeks and get that in council's hands and maybe even try to get it this weekend to your hands before the meeting so you can have another. Last look at it and determine if there's any other changes you'd like to make before the meeting.
And your worship, just for a little bit of feedback for staff, they're wondering about that, well, green space or gravel space beside the wharf for. Parking of fuel trucks, I think council should continue what we've what we've been doing the last few months and we're willing to do anything we can to help businesses succeed. In downtown St. Andrews and I see no reason for a one year period why we wouldn't allow those fuel trucks to go there. Because I understand that they have to go five blocks and they're only in the war for for a little period of time, how stressful that would be as a business operator, so. I think this would be a great compromise to remove the fuel trucks from the wharf, which they should be. And make them as accessible as possible for business operators.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I I agree completely because we removed the fuel trucks from the war for safety reasons, but. We haven't yet provided an alternative. I think that's an excellent alternative. And again, it fits with the pilot project. This is a, this is an experimental summer, so. I think that's a good idea. Okay, any other comments from council? We will take the 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 items that Mr. Spear brought to our attention, we'll go into a closed session. Afterwards, but. I suppose rather than keeping everybody on the line, we'll move to question period for people that are. Listening in. Mr. Knopper.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to go to Elena Thompson. I'm just going to ask her to unmute. Elena, you have the Florida council, you can ask them the question when your mic is off or on. There you go, you're on.
Okay, well, I think it's a wonderful idea. I am, I live on Augustus and Queen. And during the time that the water works were happening last summer, we had an enormous amount of traffic. It on this end of town and. I'm just wondering, with all that traffic coming through one way on Water Street. Where, how are they going to get back? You know, we have older people here, children. People walking bicycles, we're close to the trail, I'm a block from the trail. And I have, but there's a lot of foot activity here, so. During that time that the water was closed or working on the water, we had an enormous amount of traffic. Oh, RVs and all sorts of things. I mean, whatever goes on wheels and I'm sort of a bit concerned about that. So they even go to Patrick Street, you know, the RVs. And and make a right to get onto Water Street and left to go to the point. I just, I'm sort of, you know, I'd like that to be taken into consideration. Where does the flow go? From the entering of Water Street? How how do you want to deal with that?
If if I can, your worship.
Spear, certainly.
So Ms. Thompson, I guess one thing we're hoping and we're going to be monitoring this all summer long as staff. Keeping an eye on things, seeing where the traffic is going as best we can. To address your concerns, I'll be honest. Augusta Street probably would have been my suggestion as one of the streets because it has a sidewalk. That for traffic to go up. But the hope is that all the short streets that run ninety degrees to Water Street are all still open for two way traffic. So it shouldn't drive too much traffic up that way. At the campground to encourage them to turn their campers the other way when they exit the campground to come back up Prince of Wales. Instead of having a last look at the downtown of St. Andrews on their way home, just because of that reason to keep them out of the plat. Our final suggestion. Is again, Augustus is a little far back, but probably. Princess Royal, we're going to have like large traffic to turn up Princess Royal, then hit her. Or Carlton and turn left and hit hit it out of town that way, so that is our plan right now for anyone coming that direction. But our hope is and our thought is that most of the traffic in St. Andrews and Water Street, most of it seems to be heading down. And then people seem to exit in another way, like it, it's heading from east or west to east down the town, not as much. You know, coming back up, people see the natural flow of traffic is either go around the point or cut up one of the shorts like Frederick. Princess Royal, Sophia, Patrick, and so we'll have to monitor that to see if that continues or if it changes for the residents down there. Then we'll have to figure out first what else we can do to help that.
Okay, the thing about Augusta Street and it has been, I've been here for seven years and it's a. Runway for the students and the residents to speed up and down like, you know. Very quickly and I've tried to address it the previous, you know, few years. And then I talked to the RCMP about it, they said it wasn't their business and we had to put stop signs. I think if you. Divert all that traffic, stop signs should be put up just to slow it, slow, slow the roll. You know.
So thank you, that's a good suggestion, I'm not, we, well, it's a good suggestion, I can talk to council about that and. It's odd as it may seem, that's actually in our by law where stop signs go, but we can have a discussion if that should be done and that would help, as you say, if we. Put it like two blocks in on, either on Queen or on Montague, that might help slow that speeding up process like you mentioned.
Right, so that was, that's my concern. That's my only concern really and because I think it would be, I think it's a great idea. So, okay, I can be a monitor. On the corner here.
Might consider that.
Deputize you and let you chase people down.
I will, I've tried. That's it for me, but thank you very much.
Your worship, could I possibly add on?
Yes, certainly.
So just legitimate concerns, happy that you you waited and came on to voice them to us. Please don't hesitate to to write to us, send an email, should you notice it an issue. It's very possible that Augusta will see a increase in traffic, so will the point potentially, which means Prince of Wales might. And Queen Street is the street directly behind it, so you you might see some traffic increase there. So we actually a hundred percent don't know exactly what is going to happen as a result of this because it hasn't been done, so. Your input would be very crucial to us as we analyze this moving forward. A couple, couple of things is if this pilot project creates. Some major challenges for the business community or the community itself, at any given time, the. some major challenges for the business community or the community itself, at any given time, the project could be canceled. And the other thing to note is in a normal tourist season, about 50% of our traffic comes from within New Brunswick. So I, as optimistic as I am that we're going to have a great tourist season, based on statistics alone, there should be less traffic overall in the town of St. Andrews, unfortunately. But again, we don't know that. We'll see what July and August, but I appreciate your question and I'd like to hear what you find when this begins. And I hear you on speed. I got an email on Champlain is the same thing where people are speeding up and down it. So it's not the, unfortunately, the only street where there's some speed problems in the town of St. Andrews. So council's aware.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay.
Mr. Knopper, do we have anybody else on?
Mayor Nish, you have Counselor Gomishel who has a comment?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Gomishel.
Sorry, your worship. I was muted.
No, that's fine.
Further to, to the ladies' concerns, the transportation plan did make some recommendations for ways to slow down people. If indeed she's living on a runway on Augustus, it's not hard to slow cars down. You just put in a couple of jumps and and we can slow them down. So it's, it's maybe, maybe in terms of the transportation plan, it's a good year to be, to be looking at some of the traffic flow and, and to think the discussions coming out of the, out of the pilot project downtown. But certainly the transportation plan is still to be presented and we'd be looking for your input on that when, when it comes to the table, hopefully, maybe in the fall, I guess. Thanks for, thanks for voicing your, your opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Gomishel. I think that's an excellent point. The debriefing of the pilot project after it ends in September may well coincide with us taking on the examination of the transportation master plan because the two things bear on each other. So perfect timing. We now know what we're going to be doing in September.
Through your worship, there's only two comments slash questions on social media. So one is from Tom Sparling. His, his is more of a comment. It says, the height limit discussion should include considerations of not only full height, but also the setback slash roof angles. 50-meter height with flat roof is very difficult or is very different than with an angled roof with a dormer. And the other comment that we have is from Oyem Devad. It says, I do not feel that green space should be changed to a temporary parking spot for fuel trucks. A lot of people use that area for picnics, sightseeing for the water and so on. It's unfortunate for a distance to walk, but don't put ugly fuel trucks there. Those are the comments that were online.
Thank you, Mr. Knopper. Okay, council, deputy mayor, any comments from you? No, no. And likewise, I have nothing really more than what I've already said. So I think we will look for a motion to go into a closed session, please. Thank you, Counselor Gru. And a seconder?
I seconded.
Thank you. And all in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? So we will go into closed session. Mr. Knopper, can you?
Yep. Just give me two seconds. So I'll stop live stream.
So I think if there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to come out of closed session.
Keep up the good work, Chris and Paul.
Also move.
Okay. And a seconder? Yeah, Counselor Gomishel. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're out of closed session and now we'll go back to Mr. Knopper to I think we need to close off. We'll, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me. There was one thing that we were going to talk about tonight. I think we sort of forgotten about it. That was the, the, the arena, the medical center, the color.
Thank you, Counselor Bishop. That's right. I almost forgot about it. So I'd sent an email to council Thursday or Friday. And then I sent, took some paper copies to Counselor Bishop and Counselor Akadji to see the two color schemes that they're proposing for the arena at this point. And so council had rejected a bright color. So that took out the red and then two or three other colors like oranges and things that staff knew didn't quite fall into it. So what we kind of worked into was that they were having in front of me, one was a bluish color.
Hair and blue.
Hair, hair and blue, thank you. And then a grayish color. I personally liked the hair and blue. It was bright without being overly bright. And then the gray was kind of dull in my opinion.
Blue goes with the St. Andrews colors.
I like blue.
I go with the blue.
I like green myself.
Your worship, Counselor Gomishel would like to complain. I mean.
Just put rock weed on it and he'll be happy.
Okay. So frankly, I don't care what color it is, but what's concerning is the shape of it. It, you know, it's, it's square. And if you look at all the other lines on the building, they're all triangular. So I sent a couple of pictures around. The front of the building has small peaks and the side of the building, when you look at it from the side, there's small peaks. You know, so any architect, I'm not an architect, but if I was, I wouldn't be trying to make a second front to the building. You'd want it to blend. So it's a bit concerning that they're putting forward a square like that with a bunch of triangles. Like are they, did they put any thought into this at all? It just doesn't seem.
Well, we're assuming they're, they're officially, you know, interior and exterior decorator. So I don't want to go back to them and say, did you guys not really consider this?
I, I think.
Well, if you look at that side of the building, I think they're looking at that side of the building.
Not the rest of it.
This flat and the roof is flat and the roof is flat. You want to put a teepee in the middle.
Not a teepee, but if you look at the other angles, they're gentle slopes. And it's an opportunity to have more glass in the front of the building and it's a, I, I, I think creating an entrance there. What they said looks terrible in my opinion, but.
It's what's inside that counts.
No, it's not. That you're going to say this is, we're going to stand in front of it and the mayor's going to cut the ribbon and we want it to look nice and inviting, not like, you know, the outside of a Home Depot or something, you know?
Well, I never really.
Keeping with the rest of the building. We asked them for another recommendation that, that is in keeping with the rest of the building and then you can make it red or blue. I don't care. Mayor, I, I know you want to say something.
I don't, I don't. I liked your other idea. I think, I think we should have an airlock inside the door that's glass like we so that when you go in in the winter time, it doesn't blow all the heat out of the building, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. And I think if we want to make it glass, that would be fine, but somebody's got to clean that sucker.
Pay for it.
Your worship? Just add to what I guess what Counselor Gomishel was saying is that that portion of the building has got a flat roof. I think it would look really out of place if you tried to put a peaked roof attached to a flat roof. I think what they've done is, is just sort of blended it in as best they could with the herring blue color. It matches the front of the building. And it doesn't detract from the, the architectural features of the building. And I, I agree with Counselor Gomishel's comments that you need to have some sort of a vestibule in there for the weather. And that could be an internal vestibule because there's probably enough room to do that.
Yeah, I think so too. And an internal vestibule would be easier to maintain than an external one.
Yes.
That's good.
And do we access the future gym through the current V I C door?
Yes.
Probably, yeah.
So that could be.
Door there.
We could do the cool entrance there.
Sorry.
No, sorry. Just the, the, your, okay. So just to back up a little bit, there is a vestibule already built into the plans internally. So there's a plan to build a building. This is just, that facade was just to make it stand out from the main entrance to the arena. And I know Counselor Gru disagrees or Counselor Gomishel disagrees on, on the reasoning part. But to them, they want two entrances. One is for the arena. One is for this new wellness center we're building. They're actually repositioning the door so that door that was in the old V I C is staying as a fire exit. But do you remember where Norma's office was, that little door that was there in the past? It wasn't very big, but it was kind of, that's going to be expanded to be the entrance into the into the gym facility.
Okay.
So if you look on those drawings I gave you the other day, you can see a second door coming down to the right of the main entrance and that's going to be to go into there.
So when's the ribbon cutting ceremony?
Tuesday.
Yeah, that's right. Could have, could have taken shovels and hard hats and done a groundbreaking ceremony at any point. They're hoping by October 31st, like well before October 31st and everything goes well. It's not the construction time. That's the problem. It's getting the materials from China and Mexico. That's because a lot of the finishes come from internationally. You know, like there's nowhere in Canada that makes some of this stuff. And so they're relying on shipments that may or may not make it here on time. But even with that extra time, because they originally thought they could have it done in August and before COVID hit. And but now with COVID, they're just kind of waiting on materials to get in. So I'm thinking between Thanksgiving and, and Halloween, we'll have a, a new wellness center. That's, that's the hope.
Do we have a call for proposal plan for a future dentist?
A, a plan, yes, but not typed out. The same with the, I have one for the wellness center too. It's just waiting to see in timing a little bit. But well, the staff will work on these and probably won't be ready for this month's meeting, but by July we'll have something to give to council that we'll probably put out in August. Again, it'll give us two or three months to figure it out, which should be plenty of time.
Do we absolutely need to have that facade? Couldn't we just hang a little wooden jingle, a little, you know? Ugly?
Fair lights.
Rock weed.
Oh, come on.
It's natural.
As a final comment, I was talking to the health center. They like the red. They said that A, matches up with the high school and that's the color of health. If you think of the red cross and things, that tends to be the color of, 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 of health services in Canada. I mean, that was their perception on it. And they said it's too bad. I mean, they'll go with whatever, but they didn't mind the red. So they were happy with what was there before.
Red cross, blue cross, same thing.
Red cross is nice.
Let's have a vote. We can let the people decide.
I will be forever getting the color.
As long as it's hair on blue. Well, the reason is council too. They need to order that material to get it up before, you know, again, it's timing. So I think I've heard from council, you're not in love with that color, but I think we'll go hair on blue.
Red would hate you much.
If you hate it, in a couple of years, we can redesign something ourselves and put it up.
Uh-oh, Mr. Counselor Gomishel.
I vote red.
He would.
I, I think it's five to one for blue.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we, Counselor Akadji had already made a motion to adjourn, your worship.
All in favor? We're adjourned.
Hey, everybody.
Thank you.
Kate, you wanted us for a minute?
Yeah, well.
Thanks, everybody, by the way.
Just a quick question for you, Chris, before I go.
Yeah.
I, I, I saw the notice about the budgets and the